All right, I do have 5:20, so I'd like to call this public hearing to order. Recording of the roll.
Honorable President, it's the Commissioner Sim who has asked for an excuse.
Commissioners, do I have a motion to excuse Commissioner Sim?
I'll make that motion. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Simo, second by Commissioner Kier to excuse Commissioner Sim from tonight's meeting. Any further discussion or concerns?
Just a technicality. Do we do that during the hearing or during the regular meeting?
Yeah, I'll talk to him.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Open public meeting.
We're here tonight to discuss 225 Frenchtown Road. It appears at this point that the home has been abandoned because it's going to be vacant for a month and a half, I would say. Slideshow here. There is debris around the building. We had this winter talked to the renters, or whoever was, I don't know if it was the owner, whoever was living against residents. They had some garbage up front, and they had something to take care of a little problem, and now it has moved into the rear shed. And we've been through the process since about mid-April, and we have permission to go in and clean up the property.
I have a question for you, Jason. Since this is on Aurora Land Corporation land, who will be responsible for the costs? The landowner or the property owner?
We're going to start, and then we do have a property owner. So, and it was a recent purchase, I believe, within the last couple of years. So, we'll try to get, if we can locate, which we've made numerous attempts to locate the property owner, and we have not been successful. So, we'll publish the names in papers, a legal files.
So, you're not going to, is it going to follow through to the Aurora Land Corporation if you don't succeed in finding this person?
I'm not sure what would happen. I'll analyze it, it's a nuisance, it's a health hazard, we've also got letters from the Health Department.
There definitely is all of that. It's terrible.
All right, Commissioners, any further questions for Mr. Allenan? This is a public hearing, so if there are any members of the audience who wish to speak this time on the blight violation on 225 Frenchtown Road, now would be your opportunity. And if you are able, please approach the podium and state your name. Okay. Now, on the town road, I will close this public hearing. That still leaves us about seven more minutes before our next meeting officially starts, so please talk quietly amongst yourself. Okay. Okay. You want me to just add it right away, then?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Okay. You want me to just add it right away, then?
Yes.
Okay. All right. All right, I have 5:30 on my computer, so I would like to call this regular meeting to order. Please join me with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which stands our nation, under God, indivisible, with the redeemed and justice for all.
Item B, recording in the room.
Honorable President, it's the Commissioner Sim who has asked for an excuse.
I'll make a motion, we excuse Commissioner Sim. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Simo, second by Commissioner Kier to excuse Commissioner Sim from tonight's meeting. Any further discussion or concerns? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item C, approval of the consent agenda. Are there any changes we need to be aware of?
Sure enough.
Okay.
I'll make a motion, we approve the consent agenda. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Simo, second by Commissioner Kier to approve tonight's consent agenda as presented. Any further discussion or concerns? Do a roll call.
Kier?
Yes.
Simo?
Yes.
Tower?
Yes.
Perfect.
Yes. Item D, approval of the agenda. It is my understanding that we had the public hearing and that we should take action tonight, so I would like to move, to add right under new business, is to take action on blight violation at 225 Frenchtown Road. Would there be any other changes we need to be aware of?
No, there's no.
Okay.
Put that.
And put it right under new business.
Okay. It said I-1.
Okay, given those changes, do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
I'll make that motion. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Simo, second by Commissioner Kier to approve the amended agenda as presented. Any further discussion or concerns on this item? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item E, citizens wishing to address the Commission on items that are on the agenda. At this point in the meeting, we would like to hear comment to ensure we are able to make informed decisions. Please be respectful at time, and please show respect when presenting your concerns to the Commission. So, at this time, if you have a comment that is on the agenda, please approach the podium and state your name.
John Lumbergh, 218 Martha Wall Street. I'd like to address the Commission on Item Q, the opening of all streets in Ironwood to the ATVs.
Okay.
I personally see no additional benefit to the city for opening all streets beyond what's already available to the ATV riders. Opening streets only are going to open more problems for the residents. We have a number of irresponsible ATV drivers already, and by passing this type of ordinance that would run from 6:00 a.m. until 1:00 a.m. in the morning, would just turn the streets in Ironwood into the Wild West. Also, the Commission should be advised, if they are not already aware, that most major ATV manufacturers do recommend that ATVs not be operated on paved streets. The tires, the suspension are designed for off-road, not for paved streets, and these manufacturers warn that rollovers can occur very easily if sharp turns or fast braking has occurred. Also, the visibility of ATVs for automobiles and trucks is considerably lower, and potential accidents are greater. Also, the Specialty Vehicle Institute, some statistics from them, between the years 2009 and 2013, there were 1,250 deaths on paved public roads from ATVs. So, I think I would be totally opposed to expanding this to all city streets. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, we have a few more people just enter. This is citizens wishing to address the Commission on items that are on the agenda. Three-minute limit, please. If you have an item, this would be now the time to approach the Commission. State your name.
I'm from St. Louis, sir. I'm here for the ATV club.
Item Q, I would imagine.
What's that?
Item Q, I think.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I'm for opening all streets. I'd like to see the time open up earlier actually than 6:00. I start work at 6:00. I use money to go to work, so I'd like to see it start at 5:00. And the drivers that are up there early are responsible, and the ones that aren't responsible are under 16, and they shouldn't be on the road anyway, and it's up to their parents to police them. And if there's any other issues, I'd like it to be brought before the council, and you can meet and talk about it.
All right, thank you. Okay, anybody else?
I don't know.
Okay, name?
Elizabeth Hobbie.
Okay.
I believe you got a letter also from my daughter that is explaining her position on the highway, and I hope that you have a chance to read it. I live next to an ATV and snowmobile trail. My house is about 200 feet away from the trail north. I had many problems, and I think that 1:00 a.m. is excessive. Now, you hear the noise to open at the park in the morning, so it gives us only four hours of sleep. We cannot have open windows in the summertime because the noise is too excessive, and I'm just, there is absolutely, to me, no reason for the ATVs to stay on the trail till 1:00 a.m. Same thing regarding the snowmobiles. It's even worse because the noise is beyond, and I would like to play, I have many recordings of what we hear all day long during the wintertime, and I would like to play it for you guys to hear it. Because this is more than 200 feet away, and I have it 24/7. Snowmobiles are out at 4:00 in the morning, and we have to hear it all the time. This is not a normal person, right? This is someone who wants to be heard, and entire city has to hear them. It's not only my house. We have enormous amount of dust in our house. There is no dust control whatsoever, and when the City Commission, I don't remember what year it was, that the Island City Commission decided to allow ATVs on the trail, there was a promise made that there won't be a dust control. What is it? We cannot even walk on the sidewalk because it's covered with dust.
Okay.
It's horrible where the trail crosses the latest street.
Thank you. I'm just, we're hearing comments right now, and the Commission will discuss.
I'm just, I'm just wondering why, why even think about 1:00 a.m.? What is the reason for them enjoying 1:00 a.m.? It's going through residential, 15 miles an hour is loud.
Okay. Thank you.
Through the residential streets, starting downtown and up to Lexmore, it should be even lower, so we don't have to hear them.
Okay.
And we are at my priority. There is plenty of people here that would like to enjoy peace and quiet, and I think that the Commission represents both sides, and we represent all the residents of Ireland, and you should look for all of them, not only for the motorized sports.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Bill Martell, 647 here on Street. I want to reserve comment on sections K, Q, R, U, and I have one question to be submitted.
Okay. At this point, I'd like to hear what your comments are, that recently have the comments at the beginning of the meeting, so I can hear what you have to say, and then the Commission can discuss amongst themselves with the information that we get from the public. So, at this point, just please share what you have on each of the topics.
Okay. QB is roughly, roughly $4,500 in April, and June notes may no management if it was paid off.
Okay.
P, Capino, I'm wondering why that wasn't paid off the last year's budget. L, Northwood Paving, I can't remember what I had on that. Oh, I want a detailed map of what the money actually covers. R would be, not R, okay, Q would be, did any of you spoke of thoroughly and get a copy of the ATV rules or the snowmobile rules over her. And for you, I would ask the City Manager when they're in flat top in sections of Francis Street and Amherst, and Francis Street and Morse. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right, we are still on Item E, citizens wishing to address the Commission that are items on the agenda. Are there any other members of the audience who wish to speak at this time? Okay, I will move on to Item F. This is citizens wishing to address the Commission on items that are not on the agenda. Again, there's a three-minute limit, please. Please be respectful. The goal is to hear your concerns, ideas, best practice is often if you have a detailed concern or subject that you bring it to the staff, and at this time, please state your name.
My name is Lisa Hethel. I'm the Grand Officer of our River Friends Trail Authority. The D-Day is now Western UP, Snowshakers. We just had a concern with the walking trail that had been, it was under the understanding that the trail was going to be ignored of the snowmobile trail itself on Trail 2. We realize now whether there was some miscommunication or engineering projects or whatever it was, that you have not paved our snowmobile trail. Over the section over by Red's Auto going into their cores distributing, that is going to put up some red flags. As far as rumors, we decided only to pave a partial area of that, so we will now be on a waiting angle for our rumors, but it was under the understanding also that that area was not to be paved due to the fact that it is the snowmobile trail there. So, I guess we just need some confirmation, whether it's a trail ride, whatever it is, to determine what we're doing in that area. That would be a major concern. Now, for the snowmobiles, your pavement is going to get torn up. Our rumors are very heavy. That's something, and I'm concerned with our equipment that's going to be going through there also. So, whether we decide on plan to completely pave that area, which is not even the best of the circumstances, due to the snowfall that comes, and again, the equipment that will be used on that area, or I guess the solution that we're going to do to find it out, and I guess from here on out, as far as any of the other trails down that area, what your idea is. I understand that you don't have enough of the easement or whatever happened, but that wasn't under the understanding from the, on ourselves ourselves, that that was going to happen. So, that was just a concern that we wanted to address.
Okay. Well, thank you for bringing it to our attention. It's something new for me, so I think we'll have to do a little research. I don't have a given answer for you given this point in time, but thank you for bringing it to our attention.
I'm from the Western UP Trail Association. It's local or Rico. And from what I understand, there has been some issues with the blocking trail with ATVs. So, I guess what I would ask is those concerns be brought to the city, and then possibly sit down as groups and come up with solutions, find to, let's see if we can all work together to make it a great walking trail and a great biking and snowmobile ATV, snowmobile over everybody.
Well, I think you're on to something. You know, we do have a lot of trails in the area, and I'd be willing to sit down and talk about it, because I think safety will be very, very important, especially with those two trails working very, very close together. Signage will be key. Word, getting word of mouth out will be key. So, I look forward to working with you folks in the future.
I've been walking, running it, and also ATVing it, and it does look like, you know, there's going to be areas where rocks and stuff on the trail, and I think we all know that that's going to happen because it's so close to each other. And then I believe also with this plan, we'll be able to work, there will be areas where it will be tougher than it get around certain places, so it definitely needs to be addressed.
Okay.
So, that's why we're here, just to see if people have issues or problems with it. You know, just need to sit down and go.
Both very good ideas, and like I said, we'll do what we can to set up a meeting to sit down and discuss. We are still on Item F, citizens wishing to address the Commission on items that are not on the agenda.
Hey, Frost Hollis, sir. Is the Commission aware that there is no Trail 2 this year? It ends in Ramsey?
No, I was not.
Okay. What I'm asking for is the Commission's help getting the trail through. The CDB is helping. The big thing is, there's a small group that's willing to take over the snowmobile club that you met today. They need all the help they can, they don't know the area. They need some people to start showing some trails. They lost all other trails to the south around the open pit, and there's, we need some people to step up, and that's like about 90% of the economy from what I see of the snowmobile income around the area. The CDB is worried that it just puts heads in, that's where their tax money comes from, and they want the motel or the restaurants, gas stations, grocery stores, and everything else to start stepping up around the area. But I was, those are major faults of the old club, that you only had a small group trying to take it over, that you just couldn't do it. So, I'm asking if the Commission can figure a way to step up and help out your motorized sports around here, because you're looking at losing millions of dollars this year if that trail doesn't go through. So, they're going to bypass right over to Berkeley.
Okay. Thank you. Item F.
Colver Lobst is here, 1221 East Leonard. I asked the Commission about a month ago, or so, I asked a couple weeks ago. I'm asking you again, why isn't Sealy Street done? It's obviously done, but, I mean, the culvert, where the car street ditch is, where the gravel portion, it's about eight inches higher than the rest of the road. I mean, there's, something's wrong there. I mean, the culvert, the culvert, that doesn't have a big bowl of horns, it doesn't have a big hump on Marvick Street, and it doesn't have a hump on the, on the highway. I mean, this, this street is done wrong.
Okay.
And I asked God, he said we've got a little tweaking to do, a little tweaking to do. That's all, that's all they're getting. Us, the people in the neighborhood, the taxpayers, we're getting the runner on, and we're sitting tired of it. We want the truth. That's all we're asking for. When's the street going to be open? It's not done yet. I mean, I thought it was nine days when load restrictions were off.
Okay.
I mean, who's, who are you going to hold responsible? And you're not holding anybody responsible. And another thing is, when these major projects come up, I mean, you've got another one coming up, I mean, with Jakes, and like the project that we went through, Northland Highway, which is disgusting, the engineering, it's disgusting. What the Commission should ask for is like references, and call these cities. The last four or five projects was with the engineering, and with the contractor, and say, hey,
For all of them, not only for the motorized sports.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Bill Martell, 647 here on Street. I want to reserve comment on sections K, Q, R, U. And I have one question to be said.
Okay. At this point, I'd like to hear what your comments are. The reason we have the comments at the beginning of the meeting is so I can hear what you have to say, and then the commission can discuss amongst themselves with the information that we get from the public. So at this point, just please share what you have on each of the topics.
Okay. Q B is roughly, roughly forty-five hundred dollars in April. And June notes made no mention if it was paid or not.
Okay.
P, the P note, I'm wondering why that wasn't paid out of last year's budget. L, north was paving. I can't remember what I had on that. Oh, I want a detailed map of what the money actually covers. R would be, not R, okay, Q would be, did any use both of Berkeley and get a copy of the A T B rules for its own few rules over her. And for you, I would ask the city manager when they're in flat top in sections of Francis Street and Mawhaw and Francis Street and Morse. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right, we are still on item E, citizens wishing to address the commission that are items on the agenda. Are there any other members of the A N S who wish to speak at this time? Okay, I will move on to item F. This is citizens wishing to address the commission on items that are not on the agenda. Again, there's a three-minute limit, please. Please be respectful. The goal is to hear your concerns, ideas, best practice as often. If you have a detailed concern or subject, that you bring it to the staff. And at this time, please state your name.
My name is Lisa Hethel. I'm the brand officer of our River Springs Trail Authority. The D B is now Western U P Snowshakers. We just had a concern with the walking trail that had widened. It was under the understanding that the trail was going to be ignored of the snowmobile trail itself on Trail Two. We realized now whether there was some miscommunication or engineering projects or whatever it was, that you have now paved our snowmobile trail. Over the section over by Red's Auto going into their course distributing, that is going to put up some red flags. As far as rumors, we decided only to pave a partial area of that. So we will now be on a way to angle for our rumors. But it was under the understanding also that that area was not to be paved due to the fact that it is the snowmobile trail there. So I guess we just need some confirmation, whether it's a trail ride, whatever it is, to determine what we're doing in that area. That would be a major concern now for the snowmobilers. Your pavement is going to get torn up. Our rumors are very heavy. That's something, and I'm concerned with our equipment that's going to be going through there also. So whether we decide on plan to completely pave that area, which is not even the best of the situation due to the snowfall that comes and again, the equipment that will be used on that area, or I guess the solution that we're going to do to find that out. And I guess from here on out, as far as any of the other trails down that area, what your idea is. I understand that you don't have enough advisement or whatever happened, but that wasn't under the understanding from the A N S ourselves.
Okay.
That that wasn't happening. So that was just a concern that we wanted to address.
Okay. Well, thank you for bringing it to our attention. It's something new for me, so I think we'll have to do a little research. I don't have a given answer for you given this point in time, but thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Yeah, Kim Bowleson from the Western U P Trail Association. It's local or Rico. And from what I understand, there has been some issues with the blocking trail with A T Bs. So I guess what I would ask is those concerns be brought to the city? And then possibly sit down as groups and come up with solutions, find to, let's see if we can all work together to make it a great walking trail and a great biking and biking and snowmobile A T Bs, snowmobile show for everybody.
Well, I think you're on to something. You know, we do have a lot of trails in the area, and I'd be willing to sit down and talk about it because I think safety will be very, very important, especially with those two trails working very, very close together. Signage will be key. Word, getting word of mouth out will be key. So I look forward to working with you folks in the future.
And I've been both, I've been walking, running it, and also A T Bing it. And it does look like, you know, there's going to be areas where rocks and stuff on the trail. And I think we all know that that's going to happen because it's so close to each other. And then I believe also with this plan, we'll be able to work, there will be areas where it'll be tougher than it could get around certain places. So it definitely needs to be addressed.
Okay.
So that's why we're here, just to see if people have issues or problems with it. You know, just need to sit down and go.
Yep. Both very good ideas. And like I said, we'll do what we can to set up a meeting to sit down and discuss. We are still on item F, citizens wishing to address the commission on items that are not on the agenda.
Hey, Frosty Wallace. Is the commission aware that there is no Trail Two this year? It ends in Ramsey?
No, I was not.
Okay. What I'm asking for is the commission's help getting the trail through. The C D B is helping. The big thing is, there's a small group that's willing to take over the snowmobile club that you met today. They need all the help they can. They don't know the area. They need some people to start showing some trails. They lost all other trails to the south around the open pit. And there's, we need some people to step up. And that's like about ninety percent of the economy from what I see of the snowmobile income around the area. The C D B is worried that it just puts heads in, that is where their, their tax money comes from. And they want the motel or the restaurants, gas stations, grocery stores, and everything else to start stepping up around the area. But that was one of the major faults of the old club, that you only had a small group trying to take it over, that you just couldn't do it. So I'm asking if the commission can figure a way to step up and help out your motorized sports around here. Because you're looking at losing millions of dollars this year if that trail doesn't go through. So they're going to bypass right over to Berkeley.
Okay. Thank you. Item F.
Paul from Lobstich here, twelve twenty-one East Leonard. I asked the commission about a month ago or so. I asked a couple of weeks ago. I'm asking you again, why isn't Sealy Street done? It's obviously done, but, I mean, the culvert, where the car street, street ditch is, where the gravel portion is about eighty inches higher than the rest of the road. I mean, there's, something's wrong there. I mean, the culvert, the culvert, that doesn't have a big bow of horns. It doesn't have a big hump on Marvick Street, and it doesn't have a hump on the, on the highway. I mean, this, this street is done wrong.
Okay.
And I ask God, we still got a little tweaking to do, a little tweaking to do. That's all, that's all they're getting. Us, the people in the neighborhood, the taxpayers, we're getting the runner on, and we're sitting tired of it. We want the truth. That's all we're asking for. When's the street going to be open? It's not done yet. I mean, I thought it was nine days when load restrictions were off.
Okay.
I mean, who's, who are you going to hold responsible? And you're not holding anybody responsible. And another thing is, when these major projects come up, I mean, you've got another one coming up, I mean, with Jakes. And like the project that we went through, Northland Highway, which is disgusting, the engineering, it's disgusting. What, what the commission should ask for is like references and call these cities. The last four or five projects with the engineering and with the contractor and say, hey, are these, did these people give you, did they give you good service? I mean, we're paying millions of dollars on this thing, and it's a forty-year no look, and this stuff should be done right, and it's not done right. I mean, it's always, Sealy Street still is not open.
Well, thank you, Paul. I'll try to take a look at Sealy and see if we can nail down more of a timeframe.
The culvert's about eighty inches higher than the rest of the street. There's a big hump there. I mean, it's disgusting, and there's no reason for it. Because it wasn't there when it, when it was tore up. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we are still on item F.
Bill Martell, six forty-seven here on Street. And I'm wondering why the gates on the Little League park are locked all the time, meaning it's not our public park, but private, rather than just for the Little League. Two, we finally cut the grass on the northeast corner below the park, directly behind the property. At the time, some of the grass was seven feet high, and we cut it, I believe, about a week ago. And now you've got about that high of the grass, so now you create a fire hazard. So I ask that you ask the public safety director to ask somebody to check out the fire hazard. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item F.
Philip Reiners, Corvus Drive. I'd like to know why the city doesn't ask its contractors to guarantee the work that they do. There's a lot of sloppy workmanship that's being done, and we have to go and pay them again to do the job. Enough is enough. I mean, how is the world supposed to keep, don't have the money? On repeat, work that should have been done right the first time.
Have you brought your concerns directly to the city staff?
Yes, I have.
Okay.
And they directed me to Coleman Engineering. Coleman Engineering directed me to N dot, and it's just a big circle jerk. Nobody wants to take responsibility for anything.
Specifically, what are you referring to?
Well, I'm referring to the Route Two, we asked, not to mention some of the other streets I've seen paved, and it was sloppily done. Streets that are wide on one end, all of a sudden, they squeeze closer, and then they widen up again. I mean, there's no continuous, continuous growth. Is it possible that the city commission can make that the contractors guarantee their work?
Well, I know that we do hold a certain amount of the pay after, you know, we allow some time to inspect the project before we make a final payment.
Right, but you don't make the guaranteed work, though, do you?
Well, that I'm not sure about.
That would be a yes or no?
That would be no, I cannot answer that question this time.
Do you want to do it about the city projects, or is one guaranteed?
Okay.
The O P doesn't have a safety guarantee at their projects.
Okay.
One second for your time.
Thank you. Item F, if anybody else? Okay, I will move on to item G. Michael J D Brown, community development director, update on comprehensive plan.
Last month I was requested to come back this month, once they updated with a little more detail involved, so I will be doing that for you, so it might take a little longer there. As Richard and Stimo mentioned last month, July marks the anniversary of the council plan being drafted. So you guys had asked for a little more detail, kind of what's going on over the last year. What the plan will be every year, starting on the calendar year, is full reports on the council plan we prepared, presented to the planning commission, and ultimately the city commission. So that'll take place on the calendar year. So this first year will run roughly eighteen months, except twelve months because we adopted the plan in July of two fourteen. So our first year will go all the way through the end of twenty fifteen. So you can expect a report in January, February of twenty sixteen, that's first eighteen months. But today, I'll go through a little more, a little detail, kind of run through some of the projects and different things that we've been working on and accomplished. Again, I'll start out by a mission statement that I always do, as well as follow up to the guiding principle. Nurturing the tales of our past, building trails for our future, nestled in the walls of Michigan and the big snow country. Ironwood is a year-round destination that attracts residents and visitors alike. More class recreational opportunities, and traditional activities like skiing, biking, emerging, innovative adventure sports. Vibrant civic spaces and cultural institutions thrive with businesses intriguing historical attractions, and a welcoming, safe, and vibrant atmosphere. Ironwood is a vibrant, unique, small town where people come to enjoy the ball of life. Plusly translated as strength and will encourage and face adversity, the Finnish system encapsulates the spirit of the Ironwood community. The ethos of system is evident in the stories of our past. From its early days as a money town to world war, one where our residents can provide lives and service to this country. Same resilience and spirit continues to drive Ironwood today. As community members work together to preserve and promote prosperity, heritage, and beauty, the Ironwood community will forge new paths, uncover new opportunities, and create new stories for the future. The guiding principle that I'd like to cover this month is a friendly community. And it says, "Ironwood maintains a friendly and vibrant atmosphere for the maintenance and communication, public spaces, and infrastructure, parks, streets, sidewalks, trails, and civic institutions. Residents, businesses, and civic organizations sharing their responsibility to promote the community's image through quality of service and hospitality. Ironwood is a named friendly community that offers amenities and opportunities for inclusion at all stages of life." So one of the tools that the city has for, as part of the adoption of the one, one of those deliverables, was what we call an implementation matrix. It's basically an Excel spreadsheet that is used to track the progress of the plan. I use this on a daily basis to go through and evaluate what's going on, the projects and programs we're working on, and update this when milestones occur. It has a number of different types of information in it. I'm not going to go through it all tonight, but when we do do the annual reports, basically the matrix will be, snapshot that matrix will be taken and provided in the annual report. So the commission, and the city, and the public can see really what's going on and what's happening. So really kind of go through the accomplishments, you know, half of the year of two thousand fourteen, and where we are half a year later from the adoption of the plan in two thousand fifteen. I won't touch on every single item because neither of them has been addressed, but I will touch on the items that have been started to work on. Chapter three really starts the first work of the plan. It's the land use chapter, the community character chapter. Majority of the projects in that chapter revolve around the planning commission. That's why I kind of oversee those. So we talked about updating zoning requirements, making improvements to the review process and availability and transparency to the public, what the processes, you know, through a development view, planning permission view, and so forth. So we've talked about funding, which you are well aware of. We talked about all the during the budgeting process. It's a project that will require funding, which at this point in time, there has not been any identified through the budget process. So that project's on hold, but we're still hopeful that in the near future, we can secure funding for that. Moving on, one of the items in chapter three is to commemorate our land use and building condition in towards, really looking at what are the conditions that are resisting facility, their building, their residences, their current buildings. Again, that gets to the blight issue. And again, commission has made blight a top priority to address, and our conference of plan does take that into consideration. And recently, we've measured where we received through the interest six hundred seventy-five thousand dollars to tear down blight and other visual structures. We are in the process of that tram right now. Last year, we were bidding on three properties. Will we move forward, look back again with more properties to add to that list? So that is never, an ongoing project that will go through till next summer of twenty sixteen. Moving on, next going on to chapter four, we do the transportation chapter. So some of the projects, you know, it talks about preparing the street maintenance and reconstruction plan, really looking at, okay, we've done a lot of work on the streets, but we need to have really full-blown conference of plan, how do we attack the streets in the future, not only maintenance, but also reconstruction and projects for that. We started with that by updating our P D A project map system, which basically ran through the road. It's a computer program that we use, so that's been updated recently with the village and the twenty fifteen A project that's going on. The next step is to really sit down and put together a plan that's more comprehensive in nature. Right now, we're looking at using staff resources from that to really do it, so they don't have to be outside consulted. But because of resources and just the busy season, we haven't sat down and got to that point yet. The staff will. One of the other projects, you know, it talks about finding construct, defining construct priority improvements in pedestrian network. We've been awarded the State Foster School grant, a hundred percent grant through the D O T and federal funding. That project is underway, so again, another nice accomplishment that grant funding that the city didn't have to put any match into, it was a hundred percent grant. So we're really fortunate on that. There was a mention hearing that we have to pay for, but it's minimal compared to the cost of grants. I believe the funding is, it's around four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, somewhere in there, if you're taking. I don't have the exact number yet because we have to wait until everything's taken care of, but that's a good size of amount of money to improve our safety around our schools and pedestrian system. Another item in the transportation section is the finding construct priority trail improvements. So this is a topic that Parks and Recreation Committee has discussed. They've looked at three main areas that they want to focus on, trail improvements in the future. One of them is the connection between the regional trail in the Myers Park area. Another one is the Riverwalk Trail, as we've talked about for a number of years. Progress has been made between Wisconsin and Sheen Side on that. And then the other one is what's called the Belt Line. It's kind of the southern rail grade that runs on the southern side of the community to connect the southern area north, and really basically be able to loop within the trail system within the community. Next, we move on to chapter five, which is the Parks and Recreation chapters. Some of the items in there is really is a park action plan. And so that's a park action plan, which is required by the E N R, requires you look out five years in the future and identify capital projects. So there are a number of projects and things that, you know, have been identified. And some of the things that have been addressed so far are, we applied for a D N R trust fund grant for Curry Park Electrical Trades, and we have received that, as you know. Plan is for construction to take place next year. We've also applied for a D N R trust fund grant for the Little League field, which was recently this year, so we should hear later this year if we're successful there. City's also authorized, you know, the minors group and Hope Animal Shelter to start investigating the possibility of dog park within the community. So again, that's another one that's on there. In addition, Parks and Rec has been working on trying to put together and install a viewing deck on Mount Zion. So those are some of the projects in that plan, that specific action plan that have been addressed so far as paid. Moving on, another strategy is to understand and balance the needs of parks and trail users. Again, this gets down to how we all work together, coexist and happily. And really, it started with conversation about the motorized and non-motorized discussion and issues that have been discussed a number of years. Where we are in that is we held a conversation, a trail summit back in December of last year. We subsequently met then later on in February, March, with small groups, with three different groups involved, kind of working on two different issues. We also held onsite trail meeting and looked at the different areas. So we're making progress, and next month at Parks and Rec, we'll start talking about those issues, bring it to Parks and Rec instead of talking about different trail routes and possibilities for the motorized and non-motorized communities to work together. One of the other projects that is coming up and has been worked, is we're working on is a plan for the minors park, but it's another priority that was identified in the Parks and Recreation component. So we've been working with the minors group on that. We've had a survey that was out. We're working on making results and starting to put together draft comments towards the plan. So you can expect that to come up later this year. Again, everything I've talked about so far is projects or programs that the only money the city's put into is basically staff time. Hasn't been any extra city funds put into these projects. And again, we'll kind of get through that as we go, but I think that's important to note, that we've been able to do a lot with very little and accomplish a lot, as you'll see. Next section talks about the People Park, finishing the master plan there. And we've done a marvelous job down at People Park with the pavilion and the improvements of the park. One of the last, one of the few remaining components is the playground. So we have applied for a D N R trust fund grant for a playground there. We've been awarded it. Again, that construction project will happen in twenty sixteen. Another component in the Parks and Recreation chapter is talking about public art, incorporating public art into the community. And we started by doing that with the Art Park downtown. As you know, we will have a grand opening on Friday the seventeenth, this Friday at five P M for the Art Park. And again, we'll hopefully expect a lot of different art components to be in there, different art work, art classes, performances, and so forth. Moving into chapter six, which is our community development chapter, which focuses on housing and that kind of development. So those are the two key areas within that chapter. The first item is investing quality of life as a strategy. And, you know, one of those things that, again, with housing components, is we've been awarded housing grants through all the decades, the last three decades or so, that we've been working with Finesha, the Michigan Housing State Development Authority, on making grants to fix our homes, to fix up rental properties from downtown, and so forth. So again, we continue that progress with those grants and those opportunities, and just another program that we're currently running through the community development department. And again, as a reminder, just to let you know, the majority of the projects and work for the council plan really is heavily relied on by the community development department, which is, again, you know, very small departments. So again, as I go through this, we do a lot with little resources that we do now, and so I think that's important to keep that in the back of your mind. Allocate funds for economic development and marketing. It's something that has never really been done before in the city, and we were fortunate last year through the budget process to allocate some dollars for that purpose. That money's being carried over to work on branding project. We're still a little short on that funding, but we're looking at different creative ways to make up that shortfall in order to brand the city, market it, and attract people and retain, you know, businesses and residents that we have here. Again, that's a project for the Economic Development Corporation that they've been working on. Jumps around a little bit, but on some housing issues, we've identified developing a housing rehab toolkit, really a toolkit that helps residents understand, how can I rehab my house? What are the tools that I have available to me? To, you know, it'll be, it'll be a short document that just is a resource for the community to use. It'll be in print and online. That's nearing completion. Tim Erickson, our community development assistant, is looking at that project specifically as he's in charge of housing program. Moving on, talking about pursue, it says pursue alternative strategies to encourage funding and facilitate redevelopment projects. And this encompasses a number of different areas, but one of the key areas that you guys have already focused on, station to take action on, is the surplus property policies that we improved earlier this year. So it really allows a venue for the city to get rid of surplus property it has, and you establish that policy and those regulations to do so. So again, very important for, you know, getting property that's not really being productive out of the city's hands and back into the private ownership and productivity. Again, now we're getting more into the economic development components, and one of the large strategies in the plan is what's called a kind of gardening. The focus of that is work with what you have, work on your existing businesses, work on programs and policies that will encourage the retention of those businesses. While attraction is important, again, we want to try to attract new businesses and attract residents to come and work there and to create that employee base, but you really need to focus on those existing businesses and focus on programs that will retain them. Last year, we budgeted for money for a local facade program. We had two properties in the downtown, Stems Flower Shop and Brewster's, that were recipients of that program. Brewster's has finished their work, Stems is still in the process, but we'll be finishing soon. So again, just an improvement to the aesthetic of the downtown for a couple of businesses there. Implement the business mentorship program, develop a business retention program. So we've been, you know, working over the last couple of years with the E D C, local businesses, and Chamber, these different programs. Really, it's a matter of going out and offering to the businesses in the community a service and saying, if you need help and you need assistance, we're here to help. Going out and letting them know that, labeling of that, we're here for them. When I go out and talk to businesses, a lot of them will say, thanks for When I go out and talk to businesses, a lot of them will say, thanks for coming out. They're very appreciative. A lot of people have said, I've never, the cities never come and ask me privately. It's always what the city needs. So I think we're trying to turn that page and just get out there and provide that support for local businesses. And again, we've engaged our downtown development authority and our E C to do that as well. As the members of those boards and commissions, they go out and talk to businesses themselves, get the feedback, bring it back, and really just be that advocate for the community. Develop an economic development toolkit. This is something that we posted on our website, is basically a resource center for businesses. If they need assistance with financial assistance, or on technical assistance with a business, there are a number of different agencies and organizations that have programs out there that could help them. That's a resource that's directly on our website. And again, when we talk about businesses out in the field, we let them know that those are there for them. So if they have questions, I always tell them, if we can't help them as the city, we'll find the right organization that can. Another one is broadband, understanding broadband and internet capability in the area. You know, the city of Ironwood is very fortunate. We have a lot of the infrastructure in the ground. But, you know, a lot of rural areas don't have it as much. So community is informed between Devo County and Iron County, and they're working to try to solve that problem. One of the projects that was just recently finished was the adoption and creation of a broadband plan for Golden Bay County. Now, this is a plan that was done through Michigan Connect as a program for the state of Michigan. Plan was free. There was no cost. And the value of that plan is about $50,000. So we got a plan that was done by consultants, you know, through the state of Michigan for free, worth about $50,000. That really sets its own for how do we even afford it and make improvements on internet and broadband capability for the area. Moving on, kind of talks about the downtown, making improvements again. You know, looking at the Art Park and some of the different improvements that the D I P A does. Again, we're continuing with that and working with the different markets involved. And then finally, another, another big coordination issue, and we see this locally, but we talk about regional coordination for economic development purposes. There's a lot of different agencies out there that do different things throughout the local, county, state, and federal levels. And what we've done through the Regional Prosperity Initiative that the governor set forth last year through the Western Planning Development Regions, they went through, they got grants for doing plan. They did the plan last year. They went back to the state, got more money to start implementing projects. So there's a number of projects that they have been implementing. One of those is broadband. Some other ones is the FM Development Service delivery. Basically having a point of contact with the Michigan Works Office. So if a business comes in and says, I've got a question about this or I need assistance, there's one point of contact, and that point of contact then gets them in touch with the appropriate agencies. So that the business themselves don't have to worry about trying to call multiple people. They can go to one place, let them know their concern, and then the agencies will contact them. And again, we're involved with that too. So when people come to me and they say, I've got an issue, I say, okay, here are the agencies that will have called you. You don't have to worry about contacting them. They're going to contact you. So it's just another, another benefit for the business community that we're trying to be more proactive and work together on a regional basis. And then we really get into the kind of the infrastructure chapter, you know, water, sewer, streets, and so forth. And two of the big projects in there, or three of them are, you know, doing a master plan for your sand, your sewer, your storm sewer, and your water system. Well, right now, we're underway with doing a master plan for the santer and storm sewer. And again, that was 100% grant. And, you know, the grant is, we haven't got the exact amount, but it's, it's over $700,000. Close to $1,000 worth of planning and infrastructure projects that are being worked out through this 100% grant project. So again, doing a lot with very little funding on our own from the city dollar standpoint, which I think is important to emphasize. So kind of summing it up, what this matrix does that I use looks at dollars and cents too. So it says, how much are we spending on these projects? How much have we invested in our community in the short amount of time? And I'm not going to give you the exact numbers because these are all so tentative. And so we have finalized some of the projects and the grants and things like that. But a little over $2.5 million has been invested in the community in 12 months since the adoption of this plan, based on the programs and projects and everything that's in this plan. Of that, only 2% of the money has come directly from the city. The remainder has come from outside sources, granting agencies, other sources other than city tax dollars. So I think that's another important point to touch on that. Again, we're doing a lot of things. What I just went through, that's one here. And again, other than, you know, the infrastructure plans that are being worked out with the sewer, santer, and storm sewer, everything else is coming out of the Community Development Department. Again, working with the other departments where they need to step in and play their roles. So, you know, I think that's really great that we can see that the investment that the city put into the plan financially is paying off right now because we're putting very little of our own funding into implementing it. Granted, there are still projects and programs that we've talked about that will require some city funding. They're very important, but as you can see from an overall perspective, we're doing really well from a financial standpoint. And we're doing really well on implementing the plan. So again, there'll be a written report that will come out, you know, back later in 26, early 2016, where you can see all the numbers, read everything yourself. But you guys asked for a little more detail. I gave you some detail. Hopefully it wasn't too long, but I wanted to make sure I gave you a very good comparison picture of it. So with that, I answer any questions you might have.
Lots of good information, commissioners, questions, comments, or anything?
Other than to say, I am just really pleased with everything we've been able to get done with minimum amount of money over the last year or two, or five or six, actually. And I'd just say, keep up the good work and thanks for the update.
Anybody else? Thank you, Michael. Takes us to old business. Item H, discuss and consider rejecting demolition bid for 206 Southwest Street and authorize to rebid.
Thank you. This is one of the properties that we did go over a bit. We had one theater that bid. We haven't been able to get all their paperwork and processes in place to move forward on these projects. We are recommending that you reject that bid and allow us to want to rebid that particular project.
I'll make a motion. We reject the bid as described in item I. So wait a minute, item H. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Simo, second by Commissioner Kair, to reject the demolition bid as described in item H. Any further discussion or concerns? Can I do a roll call?
Simo?
Yes.
Tower?
Yes.
Kair?
Yes.
Yes. Takes us to new business. We will add item 1A, which is to discuss the Blight violation on 225 French Town Road. So Scott, you're looking for action?
I'm looking for action, yes.
Okay. Okay.
We'd like to get your authorization to go in and clean up this health hazard as soon as we can get to it. Hopefully be in the next week here with our DPW guys. I know they're awfully busy. We are in contact with the health department to make decisions.
I remember with some of the other situations that we addressed similar to this, we had a whole payment plan that would be a subsequent.
That would be something that will come later on, after, after the cleanup, you know, costs. That's when we come back to the commission with the payment plan.
And all we need to do now is authorize DPW to do. I'll make a motion. We authorize DPW to do the necessary cleanup on the property in item.
20.
I, one. Second.
Okay, excuse me. Motion by Commissioner Simo, second by Commissioner Tower, to authorize the, excuse me, the cleanup for the Blight violation on 225 French Town Road. Any further discussion or concerns? Roll call.
Tower?
Yes.
Kair?
Yes.
Simo?
Yes.
Perfect.
Yes. Item I, discuss and consider partial pay number one to Ross Peterson Construction in the amount of $21,895.60 for the construction of the Art Park.
As Mike highlighted, the Art Park construction is essentially complete payment. We're just holding a 5% retainage. Again, they are the DAP and the motor are lotterying the grass up there so we make sure that that's all, you know, good and adequate. So we are recommending the city commission make the payments and we will be coming back with, releasing the retainage shortly once we're sure that the grass is covered and there is.
I'll make a motion. We authorize a payment described in item I. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Simo, second by Commissioner Kair, to authorize the payment number one to Ross Peterson Construction as described in item I. Any further discussion, concerns? Roll call.
Kair?
Yes.
Simo?
Yes.
Tower?
Yes.
Yes. Item J, discuss and consider partial payment number two to Ross Peterson Construction in the amount of $136,532.66 for the Michigan Western Gateway Trail Project.
Again, this is the motor, partial statement, project is being in the lap top area we're trying to wear. Bridge is complete. There's still some restoration work that has begun. The trail will be green on trail to blend in the edge trail with the adjacent landscape. Some sign to move up later, just with some of the contract control signing that goes on out there. So again, it's a partial payment and project is moving on very well.
And what do we have left as a retainage on that?
We do keep the 5% retainage, so we have about over $13,000 we're holding on to. Just to give you a feel for where we're at, the project total is $347,000. We're at $269,000 in total payments and improvements.
I'll make a motion. We approve the payment described in item J. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Simo, second by Commissioner Kair, to approve the partial payment number two as described in item J. Any further discussion, concerns? Roll call.
Simo?
Yes.
Tower?
Yes.
Kair?
Yes.
Yes. Item K, discuss and consider final payment to Angelo Lupino in the amount of $57,342.26 for the 2014 street paving projects.
Again, this is last year's project. We did have a few remaining streets north of U S two in an area that, so we just finished a water and sewer on. There are a few streets in there that were completed in this project and a few street patches. So this finalizes their contract and the work they're doing for us. This is out of that budget, so it was budgeted $1,000 or $2,000 for this one.
And that answers a question a resident had about, so money, this money was budgeted last year for this project and we're just releasing it. I'll make a motion. We authorize a payment described in item K. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Simo, second by Commissioner Kair, to authorize the final payment as described in item K. Any further discussion, concerns? Roll call.
Tower?
Yes.
Kair?
Yes.
Simo?
Yes.
Perfect.
Yes. Item L, discuss and consider partial payment number one to North Woods Paving in the amount of $611,601.4 for the 2015 street paving project.
Again, this is their first farmers payment. The hard work has been completed today, as you've seen around town. All rising, knowing, street paving is still going on this week. And again, there are more progress coming through, but this is the first one to come through paid over the word date.
Okay. And I know that there was a question about what's being paved. If anybody's considered, they might be able to check our website or come down to the city offices to view a map of the.
You can really find the website and the maps here, not my condition, that, that's what we like to paint. Also, it comes from the dollars that we have. You know, the more roads and the map that we have, money to pay. Even with our odd issue, we're going through that map, trying to get as much of the spend that, you know, done with the money we have. If we did receive, you know, we had the hot up and done. And again, the city by the end of this week, they'll have everything paved out essentially that they colorized or know. We'll see where, financially, the dollars that we have and then see what additional roads might be paid in addition to what's been done so far. So again, pretty straightforward. You have a certain length of the street and so many dollars to spend on that. But we do have a map that they have all that shows what we intend and are hoping to achieve with the dollars we have.
And there also was like a question about Francis and Hemlock and Lawrence. Any way to roughly predict?
Yes, two intersections that were left there in the act in our street paving project. The reason they're gap is that's part of what you have on the agenda under the urgent need project. Water and sewer work being done in those two blocks, those two intersections were left. Gap would help be paved so that the water and sewer can connect to water and sewer in those intersections. They're going to be pated that way.
Okay, very good.
So they were intentionally a gap.
Okay.
Just, it really doesn't have a whole lot to do with this specific project, but I remember hearing that M.DOT agreed to help us pave some intersections as part of the highway project. Is that correct?
Well, not as a highway project. Actually, we were just working on this. He was working with M.DOT on smaller projects. And in the downtown area, we had a couple of intersections that took a lot of our money, it's a lot of our time and effort with our, our resources, with the DPW crew. So we approached M.DOT and again, it's on the E R, so they reversed us for our maintenance money. So there are two intersections, one at Aaron Douglas and the other at Supple and Alora. And Bull, three intersections.
And the dump and itself.
So those three areas, we approached the DOT, asked them if we would help fund a more permanent patch, if you will. We agreed to do that to the tune of about $18,000. So we will be reversed from the DOT for those particular intersections in that patch, the larger street patch down. For the final, so we're straight.
And one of the things I've been hearing from some people is, well, how come they didn't let us know that they were going to be doing this project or that project at this time? And it's hard to explain to people that this is kind of almost a free flowing project. As, as they're able to get something done, they move to the next part, and it all moves really quickly, especially those intersections downtown.
Yeah, the intersections came up real quickly. It was, we had the opportunity with our contract being open. We had very good prices from the contract service to do the work. Again, we approached M.DOT and they had this opportunity and they had moved it as we moved forward. It was a very quick movie. And again, now trying to get word on, but that's not what happened. It's completed right also.
And this payment that we're, we're looking at here is a little less than half of the total amount?
It's a little less than half, yes.
And about how far through the project would you say they are? I know it's hard to put a number on that.
I will give you a better handle. We did everything paved out. We actually paved by the time that asphalt is removed. So as they put it out, I guess they're not on to that. Right now, with, based on what I'm reading, this one we took us through about everything north of U S two and the other areas. The stuff they're doing in Nori, that area gives me a part of this. So we're going to be well over probably a million dollars worth of work plus. That's already booked and drawn.
I'll make a motion. We authorize the payment described in item L. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Simo, second by Commissioner Kair, to approve partial payment number one as described in item L. Any further discussion, concerns? Roll call.
Kair?
Yes.
Simo?
Yes.
Tower?
Yes.
Yes. Item M, discuss and consider partial payment number one to Pensura and Superior Play for Longyear Park Playground Equipment Project in the amount of $49,970.
This is the D N R grant project and the place where the net been installed turned out very well. Again, perhaps you have to look at it, but the individuals are willing to join it. Come to Longyear Park. It has a special place service. There's another entities that are located down there. Again, this is a whole payment with 5% of the retainage, so we're pulled down to $2,630. That finalized and take a work and a few oz bands. The project is essentially completed. Few things had to be finalized.
Very nice project. There was a lot of plate equipment that's added for handicapped children, so.
Yes.
It's excellent.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion. We approve the payment described in item M. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Simo, second by Commissioner Kair, to approve partial payment number one as described in item M. Any further discussion, concerns? Roll call.
Simo?
Yes.
Tower?
Yes.
Kair?
Yes.
Yes. Item N, discuss and consider approval of rural development pay package in the amount of $135,566.61 for the city of Ironwood face three utility project water portion and authorize mayor to sign all applicable documents.
Again, this is for the ongoing project that we're sort of constructing in the city that last year and this year. This is a reflection of some of the work that I've hearing, expenses that are associated with working in Nori. It's organized over in the Nori area. We're doing a number of locks and water sewers streak over there. You'll see that things are split between water sewer and the water portion of it. that things are split between water sewer and the water portion of it.
And this is payable to Rutsela?
To, this would be payable to Rutsela.
Right, I'd like to address.
Yeah, yeah, this is a good point, part of this is also work at US 2, at MDOTs, we are not either responsible for water, we're part of that also.
And I'd like to just ask staff about Celia Street, I drove down Celia Street a few days ago because I knew it was probably going to come up, and I didn't perceive any issues, but, you know, I wasn't looking for a hump in the road or anything, I mean, there were no bumps, but I wasn't looking for some kind of hump. So is there one, and if so, is there an issue with it?
Celia Street, the project is complete, there are some punch list items that I mentioned to Paul, that we're going to contract, come back with a greater, just to, again, fine tuning, again, it's very passable, very durable, it's operating well, it's in good shape, what we do in the company is just touch it up again before we find out how to integrate it, so that probably is referencing, we're going to get open to traffic, it's very passable, take it right through, but we do want to touch up the edges a little bit.
May I make a comment?
We are past the point of public comment, thank you. Item N. Any action?
Oh, I'll make a motion, we approve the pay package described in item N. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Simo, second by Commissioner Kair to approve rural development pay package described in item N. Any further discussion or concerns? Rule call.
Power.
Yes.
Kair.
Yes.
Simo.
Yes.
Yes. Item O, discuss and consider approval of rural development pay package in the amount of $39,513.52 for the City of Ironwood Phase III Utility Project Sewer Portion and authorize Mayor to sign all applicable documents.
I'll make a motion, we approve the pay package described in item O. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Simo, second by Commissioner Kair to approve the rural development pay package described in item O. Any further discussion or concerns? Rule call.
Kair.
Yes.
Simo.
Yes.
Power.
Yes.
Yes. Item P, discuss and consider adopting resolution 015-026, approving about language for 12 charter amendments for the November 15 election addressing charter provisions that conflict with state law.
That's exactly what they are, they put state law in this first phase, we all are trying to bring our charter into compliance with state law.
Okay.
And the attorney has done some.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll make a motion, we adopt the resolution described in item P. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Simo, second by Commissioner Kair to approve resolution 015-026 as described in item P. Any further discussion or concerns? Rule call.
Simo.
Yes.
Power.
Yes.
Kair.
Yes.
Yes. Item Q, discuss ordinance number 510, book five, resolution 015-024 and resolution 015-025 regarding snowmobile and ATV access to the city streets.
All right, thank you, Andrew and I are going to text you on this, just hand out a quick, a couple of quick maps here for reference. So we had worked out this, this item a few weeks ago, and a discussion with the guys, opening up additional streets to ATV and snowmobiles, so we'll give you a little background on where it came from, why we're having this discussion, and there. So it started with, I was approached by a representative from one of the motorized groups in the community, and also, they were approached by all different businesses with questions on how do we access, you know, our patrons are asking us, how do we get to you, how do we get to the trail, how do we get here and there, and, you know, with some of the streets are so restricted, it was difficult for users to navigate, especially visitors coming in from out of town, they're spending, you know, two hundred dollars here, so from an economic development standpoint, it's really important to, you know, open up a few remaining streets that are left to allow adequate access and then also safe access, which change of the question. When you look at what's currently still restricted, there are six streets, two of those streets are going to remain restricted, which is US 2 and Business Route 2, based on state statutes and laws which Andrew can touch on, but there are four remaining streets that are still restricted, and those contain Lowell Street, Air Street, Lake Street, and McCall Avenue. So portions, either all of those streets or portions of them, still have restrictions on them. So what we're proposing is to eliminate the restrictions, open up those four remaining streets to include, you know, like the other streets in the community that are all open. So the only restricted streets will continue to be US 2 and Business Route 2. Again, from the community development standpoint, it's to encourage economic development, to allow people to access businesses, you know, right now, it's somewhat difficult to maneuver across the highway and get to different businesses on the highway from different hotels and restaurants, and it's also difficult really to access the downtown, because really, all the streets of the downtown are pretty much restricted to ATV and snowmobile access. So that's what I have to say, and I'll turn it over to Andrew to talk about the other aspects.
From the public safety aspect, back in April 1st of 2014, a bill was passed that the government's law, rules would be calling by county to determine if their roads will be open. As you drive into Michigan, you'll see it states that all county roads are open, just don't deal with ATVs. So as a municipality, we have to determine what rules we are going to have restricted or open, and you have to sign them properly and in our current ordinance, we are unable to enforce the restricted rules. A majority of our ATV or ORV population are very law abiding, all the rules of the rule of citizens. So by opening all the roads, it allows us to adequately enforce ORV or ATV use. The second part of that is by opening all the roads, you open up to the signal crossing that blocks more than lanes, and from a public safety standpoint, a signal crossing is much safer versus crossing on a signal. So from a public safety standpoint, it allows us to enforce though, to use the ORVs and ATVs, make sure that they're following the rules, have the proper licensing and certificates, and also to provide for a safer environment for them also.
So again, this evening, it's just a discussion for ordinance, in order to, we have three documents, an ordinance to amend the snowmobile ordinance, and then to amend the resolutions for ATV and snowmobile. Both snowmobile and ATV ordinances allow the city commission to make changes to the road restrictions through resolution. There's no changes necessary to the ATV ordinance, it's fine as it is, we would just be amending, redoing the resolution to open up the streets or to your pleasure. With the snowmobile ordinance, there are specific streets and intersections listed that, from an enforcement standpoint, it's difficult for the police department to enforce, and difficult for residents to understand where they can and can't go, so again, just trying to simplify it so that enforcement is easier and safer for the public, so that's the reason for the change in the snowmobile ordinance.
Commissioners, any questions for Michael or Public Safety?
I understand the logic, I guess, of opening a few remaining streets if we're going to have our streets open, because it's, it's not significantly changing the lay of land up, as it were, but it's, it's simplifying things, and I do believe that's what public safety is looking for. That being said, our, especially our ATV ordinance is really specific on, on some things that kind of were glossed over by some individuals here today. Looking at the ordinance as, as you read it off the municipal website, it says, "An ATV operated on a blah 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 street, et cetera, shall be operated, A, for the purpose of gaining access to or from individual residents to a city, county, or state designated trail using the most direct route, or B, for the purpose of buying retail goods," basically the same parameters, most, most direct route. And I understand that enforcing this is, it's almost not possible, but I also understand that there have been issues, and it is a real problem for people. Oh, and the other thing the ordinance says is that ATV shall ride in single file to the furthest right side of the road and travel no faster than 50 miles per hour. And those are also in our ordinance. And our ordinance also says only between April 1st and November 30th, and almost every one of those is routinely violated. So we have to protect our citizens in addition to taking care of the ATV, and there is a balance here. For example, the hours way, I think are way too liberal, I agree with whatever residents said that was too, it was too late at night, so, just my two cents on that part of this topic. I was part of the commission that created this ATV ordinance originally, I don't know how I vote the next time around, it was, it's still hard for me either way, I can see both sides of this, there are two sides, they're both very good sides, but definitely, those hours of 6:00 AM to 1:00 AM are, you don't need to be driving your ATV around town at 1:00 AM, just get home earlier that night, leave later. The guy that said he drove his ATV to work is violating our ordinance, it's not for that purpose. People are using, people are using these machines as general transportation around town, and that is a violation of our ordinance.
Some people are, but the majority.
But people are.
Some people are, I think the majority are trying to get from their house to the trail without having to trailer the machine.
Right, and I understand that, and that's why I say there are two very different sides, but there are, there is a definite downside to this, and we have to do our best to take care of those people.
You know, in trying to see both sides of it, I, I think the snowmobile and the ORV ordinance, both these resolutions need to be the same, because right now, they're not. Hours of operation, speed limit on all local streets, need to be consistent across the board, to make it easier for police and business owners to explain what are Ironwood's rules to people that come through town. If you're going to allow ORVs and snowmobiles on streets, I think it should be 50 miles an hour. If you're on the trail, would it be 25? But they don't need to be driving any faster than 50 miles an hour if they are going from their home to a trail or place of business. And if they choose to, then zing them. But the other problem you have is you have kids driving these ORVs, wearing helmets, you cannot, you don't know if they're underage or not, there's no way to tell, they're wearing helmets. Those are the ones that aren't going to go 50 miles an hour, those are the ones that are going to do, there you go, you know, and if you have a, the speed limit lower, they're going to violate it, you can stop them, you'll have a reason to. If you don't lower the speed limit, like, you aren't going to be able to stop them. You can't stop somebody for no reason. And the hours of operation, in trying to compromise, I would, I can see limiting that further.
All right, just get home earlier, you know, it's just, the reason is to allow people to get from their residences to the trail. And the businesses, well, what businesses are open after that late at night, just bars? We're not supposed to be promoting bar hopping by ordinance, so that doesn't pertain at all late at night, and getting home, just get home earlier, you know, it's not hard.
So I guess the question would be time, what, what would you see a more appropriate time to change to?
10:00 PM.
So.
7:00 AM to 10:00 PM. I mean, when they're hot rodding around neighborhoods, and it happens in all of our neighborhoods, we've all heard it, and it is only a few, but it is annoying, and it should, I don't think we should allow it at those hours.
I don't know, I think the Hurley, right, I guess we're going back to promoting what we're going to promote, not promote, you know, you get a lot of people who are coming from that direction later at night. I don't, I don't know what to say about 10 o'clock.
10 o'clock is pretty early, I was going to suggest maybe midnight.
What does Hurley's ordinance say? For time?
At this time.
Maybe we should take a look at theirs first before we make a decision.
Theirs was later.
And we're not Hurley.
They're.
We're not Hurley, we're not.
Civil law ordinance, maybe we'd like.
We're not Wakefield.
Compare it to theirs.
And do whatever we want.
In research, everybody was there.
That's like, years ago, we never would, I have people riding all over the roads, but after Myers Memorial Park took over most of the trails through the woods, now they're forced to ride on the street.
I don't think that's part of our discussion right now, I think we need to take a look at the ordinance, the hours, and the speed limit. Are you, what are we looking for tonight, are we just looking at a discussion?
It's just a discussion, maybe with some direction of things that you want, your time and speeds are issues that you want some change. But you said in.
Hey, Michael, I'm completely presented in front of you is what you're looking at, I guess, bring it back at the next meeting, we're probably looking for a motion with any changes to it, would that be probably a great process, because it may be a difference of opinion on the commission, we don't know until you actually take action on it.
Right. I mean, generally, we like to be able to present you with the ordinance as is that you can approve, you know, so I guess, you know, there.
Well, can you not, you can.
Maybe if you can come to consensus, maybe before we actually present it for adoption, that would be helpful. Again, it sounds like Andrew said, they don't have different rules, I don't claim anything about the speed limits and time, because that's, that's something to deal with, Andrew could probably talk about that better, what's appropriate, and again, what's appropriate is really up to you guys, like Andrew said, everyone's different, and, you know, it's what, what's best for Ironwood, or what you feel is best for Ironwood.
Well, we can't really take action on it, so I've just made my thoughts clear that the more restrictive timeframe is desirable, and whether the commission agrees with me or not, that's I, you know, but that's just how I feel.
I have a question on the, the 20, where does the 25 miles come from, 25 miles an hour?
That's the speed on the road.
Okay, so if the.
We're at the post 15 throughout the city if you're looking at roads.
That was kind of my question, if the, if the speed limit on the city roads are 25 miles an hour, and you have a snowmobile or ATV going 15, would that create more of a hazard with the different speeds?
You would probably have to sign throughout the city, so that they are aware, because if they're unaware that they, the speed is different from the residential speed, they have to know.
Okay.
It is in our ordinance right now, at 15.
Okay.
It's in there, I'm reading right off municipal.
On the roadways?
On the roadways.
And that's been my, no kidding, this is our ordinance, it's unenforceable, because we don't have proper signage. I think we're heading in the right direction, we're doing top, we're doing the right thing at the right time, as laws have changed, we have to adapt.
I think if you posted the speed limit at the entrance to, entrances to town, I think that would be sufficient.
I would have to look at, just like. County roads are moving, I mean, entrances to the state or the county, I don't know if that's that, but that would be.
Well, even residential streets aren't posted, I mean, we all know that the law is 25 unless posted otherwise in cities, there's no reason you can't have the same thing for motorized people, but a speed limit is 15 unless otherwise posted, you know, it's, it's not complicated.
But when you sign your driver's license, you're agreeing that you understand both laws, we have to note that people come into this area somehow that they're at a different speed limit.
Right.
As Mr. Power stated, I don't know if that's a sign as you come into the city, or but has to be posted on the roadways, that would be a weaker question for, have to contact the DNR, because they oversee the ORV and ATV compliance regulations.
Well, commissioners, any additional questions or comments, otherwise, I guess we're looking at bringing this back to one of our future meetings, and it'll be brought back to us as is, as presented tonight, unless there's some further discussion, I'm guessing.
I guess with the speed, I guess Rick's made his position, he's looking at 50 miles an hour, how do the rest of you guys feel, do you have an opinion on it, is 15 good, is 25 good, something else?
I like 15, I think 15, for a vehicle that's not designed for on-road uses, is sufficient, while taking into consideration the fact that they are potentially spending money, two hundred thousand dollars here, whatever else, I think that's fast enough. And the ones that aren't going to obey it, then they can suffer the consequences.
And we do have a fairly strict schedule of penalties that are connected with that ordinance that we created, that the motorized community is supportive too, they want, they want this to be done right too, they don't, they're not happy about the renegades that are making, giving them a bad name, so. They don't, they're not happy about the renegades that are making, giving them a bad name, so it, it's not just the non-motorized people, for example, that want to see this. We really need to address this, this situation in our town. And if you're going to look at what other towns do, look at Holton or Iron Mountain, you know, bigger towns in the UP and what they do.
And I agree that, I think, should this go through, I don't think you're going to see much change in town in general anyways, because as you said, most of the streets are open as it is. I don't think you're going to see much different, you're not going to see 100 more ATVs running the streets now just because we passed it. It's not going to happen.
No, I, I agree with you. I think it just simplifies things for the, especially for the, the good law-abiding citizens that are just trying to get to the trail, and it's just not always possible with the restrictions we have.
Sure. Um, so we can, I mean, it sounds like majority of here are at least in consensus on the 15 miles an hour. I guess the time is a little more open, is 24 hours a month, but it all had a different thing of time, so, um, yeah, I guess the question is, is 1:00 AM too late in, in the morning? Should it be, you know, 12, 11, 10, something more along those lines? Is 6:00 o'clock too early? Should we push it back to 7 or 8? I guess who we know is going to kind of move forward when we bring it to 10:00.
These are the times that we've been operating off of for a while now. Um, from the public safety standpoint, have you had much concerns with the, the operating hours?
Not the past two years.
Well, in the interest of compromise, could the commission think that 11:00 PM would be a suitable time?
I like to look at some other communities.
Well, I guess we're just kind of discussing here, um, I guess when it comes time to vote on this, you know, we can discuss more as far as times and mileage, miles per hour, take a look at what our surrounding communities are doing, you know? I just, when I, I think about these ordinances, I like to look at a seamless transition from, I'm coming from Hurley and I live in Wakefield or vice versa. You know, we're kind of like a, a regional identity as far as like ATV trails and snowmobile trails, so I just would like to see more of like a smooth transition. So I'd like to see what our neighbors are doing and kind of follow along. And I think that's kind of what we talked about when we came up with these ordinances to begin with.
Well, what we can do is, well, Andrew and I will work on researching, I guess, Hurley, Besner, Wakefield, kind of in there, is kind of see what, what they do. And then bring back those options at the next meeting, at the next meeting, and then just kind of leave it open-ended for you guys to really make a decision, and then we just plop in the times and the speeds after you guys go around, if I can disclose.
Commissioners, it sound reasonable?
Yeah, it sounds great.
Okay, thank you. Item R, discuss and consider adopting resolution 015-028, awarding bid to Jakes excavation in the amount of $402,909.30 for the CDBG urgent need water main replacement project.
Thank you. Um, again, this is from a winter ago. We had a really deep freeze. Uh, we were, we're recipients of some grant funding, involved in place, uh, watering a couple of areas in town. One is the Francis area, we talked about a couple of blocks there, and the other is just out of the Pennaki Road. We have, um, three or four blocks up there watering, and these were replaced, and those residents are still in a temporary watering system up there, needs to be, uh, put, put the road off permanently. And we did see, received competitive bids, and Jakes excavation was the role bidder for this project. And we had a letter here for Coleman Engineering, now a recommendation for Jakes again. Um, Jakes excavation is, um, a little new in the business, so we're sure that they can complete the project. You know, they started hearing up, they can be a bigger company, keep on some water sewer projects, I believe, uh, might, uh, they've done a few others down in over in Wisconsin. And, um, as we looked at, uh, as far as being experienced in that area, yeah, they are, I think, up to $40 and over the next, uh, year. Again, the city has, and just kind of apologize to the grand notes, um, they grant funding that cover 100% um, of the project cost. City would be into it for about $34,207. They grant the mortgage $368,702. So we do have some, uh, dollars that we have come up with. Uh, we are reporting through the, um, urgent need and grant funding. We are also looking at receiving about $102,000 back from previous expenses that they expended during that period of time. So those $100 have been used to offset our contribution, if you will, some additional grant money that's going to come back in. So, uh, that is a recommendation, um, as to award to Jakes excavation. I would like to know, too, that in the grant process, uh, we also received, are willing to receive $60,000 for the engineering costs, so again, very nice, uh, opportunity for us to improve some of our infrastructure in town. This will be our water infrastructure with this project.
I'll make a motion. We approve the resolution in item R.
Second.
Second.
I think Mr. Tower beat you to it. Um, motion by Commissioner Semel, second by Commissioner Tower to adopt resolution 015-028 as discussed in item R. Any further comments or concerns? Roll call.
Tower?
Yes.
Kair?
Yes.
Semel?
Yes.
Yes. Item S, discuss and consider awarding RFP to Coleman Engineering in the amount of $33,400 for surveying services for the Aurora Land project.
All right, thank you. Um, to read, so kind of reading reminds you what's taking place on this particular project. A few meetings ago, we talked about the Aurora Land survey project, and we had a quite a lengthy discussion on it. A couple of things come out of that meeting. Originally, the proposed project was to have the city cover a larger portion of the project. At that meeting, the city decided to split the project. 50% would be paid for by the city, 30% would be paid for by the residents within this neighborhood. Um, and the second item that came out of that was to go up for request for proposal for professional services for surveying services of this project. So, uh, gathered together the RFP, we published in the Globe, we sent it directly to three local surveying companies. Coleman Engineering was the only company that submitted. I did hear back from one of the other companies, which were able to, and they, and they were interested in that, hear back from the other companies. Proposal outlines, um, exactly what was discussed previously at the meeting, of what they would be doing to serve the area, all of which all comply with state statute. Um, their cost has increased slightly. Um, the original bid did not, the original proposal did not include some of the incidental costs of, um, porting fees and copy fees and state processing permanent fees. So as part of the RFP, we required that the city should include all those fees, so that everything will be capitalized under one, under one item. So everything that you see here before you, um, in the dollar amount, include all, will complete all the required actions per state statute. Any additional fees, what would be on the survey fees, would come from legal review from the city attorney. So at the end of the project, we'll have the city attorney review everything, make sure it's in good order. That will be an additional cost that will, again, it'll be, um, split between the city's cost and the resident's cost. Um, with that, um, we had a few questions, but the project was since here, the survey from Coleman, who put the proposal together, uh, we would have talked here at the last meeting, and we had this discussion. Um, so again, tonight, we're recommending Coleman be awarded the, the contract for this, um, so they can get underway with the project.
Commissioners, any questions, concerns?
I'll make a motion. We award the bid as described in item S.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Semel, second by Commissioner Tower to award the RFP to Coleman Engineering as described in item S. Any further discussion, concerns? Roll call.
Kair?
No.
Semel?
Yes.
Tower?
Yes.
Perfect.
Yes. Item T, discuss and consider waiving the vendor fee for the Festival Ironwood.
Again, it is festival iron week, you guys start Wednesday through Saturday, and each year, actually, yes, it's a festival pays of one vendor fee. Again, they have local vendors out there, like, um, and sort of they pay one vendor fee for $100, and they've agreed to do it through that also. They request that they just waive the other vendor fees and just charge them for one vendor fee, $100. That's been the standard practice in the past.
It's a great event, and I'm happy to make a motion to waive the vendor fee for the 2015 Festival Ironwood. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Semel, second by Commissioner Kair to approve waiving the vendor fee for the 2015 Festival Ironwood. Any further discussion, concerns? Can Andrew roll call, Karen?
Semel?
Yes.
Tower?
Yes.
Kair?
Yes.
Yes. Item U, managers report.
We touched on a lot of the projects that, um, through the processes with payments, uh, stuff, you know, we haven't touched on, um, US Two project, M now, again, their contractors, Hebrew Construction is moving the, um, street work, also the city sewer water is part of that project, so they are moving on very, uh, very well. Project's going to be fine, they're actually working, uh, to the east of Lake Street on sanitary sewer, and things moving on now well with the project. Good report. We also have Rizzo Construction working in the northern neighborhood, that's definitely happening, the area of water is moving on well. Uh, you see a real nice school, the state road, the school project started, a lot of work on, uh, sidewalks, um, access, including, uh, for the kids in the neighborhood, and walking to and from school. So again, very nice project, uh, of younger, uh, year over the next, uh, next month or so. Also, we're on a common, people are referring to the Sod Ranch, that's a project where we have a contractor in town, they're cleaning, metalizing, uh, a big portion of the city sanitary sewer system, which hasn't been done, uh, ever, probably. And, uh, again, uh, great opportunity, this is completely cleaned out, but also videotaping our sewers, so we know if we have, uh, problem areas that we need to fix. And, uh, we'll probably help go on, you listed a many, many projects that are going to come out of that. This particular project, and specifically going forward, we'll get a better handle on our system, and, uh, fix some problems that are, well, I'm sure that we'll come up with it. As we do find problems, we are going on fixing them. Um, we fixed 12 sanitary ladders that we talked about, connected to our sanitary sewer system that is beautiful, somehow they're draining water into the sewer system. So we fixed 12, and we have more, I'm sure, we'll be fixing going forward. And again, all the other projects, we'll have to, um, we'll have to sit in the record today.
Thank you.
Sorry, two items I wanted to mention. Um, we do have, uh, two city trucks parked up the parking lot. Yeah, the city commission authorized, uh, purchase of the trucks a while back, um, nice report, we do have those in place, um, very important for us in our winter snow removal. They're year-round, uh, used trucks, we do have, one is a sulfur sander, some are, um, geared for the winter, and the other is a tandem dump truck. So they're all in parking lot, they're open, doors open, need to peek in there. Quite impressive to see what you guys are operating, um, a lot of it is computerized, uh, there's a lot of switches and toggles, so take a peek at those, uh, when you look outside. And sulfur sanders, that's helpful too, also, they're noise breaker, we talked about that for a number of years, so it'd be a nice addition to our fleet. And I do want to also add, he's kind of in the back here, uh, he's not needle, but Michael Wyer from the chamber is here, uh, I'm the chamber director, so Michael, if you just mind waving your hand, and, 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 uh.
Welcome.
So just wanted to introduce Michael out on the, on the audience here. Okay, now.
Okay. Item V, other matters. I always don't mind starting first. I just want to make a note that, um, Michael Brown will be presenting down with the Michigan Municipal League in September, I believe. Um, he's going to discuss and present our art park, so it'll be recognized a little bit there, a little extra PR downstate, so that's, that's great, Michael, thank you for doing that. And just also want to put out a, a thank you to a lot of our city, city workers, they, they volunteer time, and a lot of work was done on the Little League fields, and a lot of it was done on a voluntary basis, after hours and on their, their time off, so just a, a thank you to those folks. So that is all I have for other matters.
Got a couple few things here, uh, that I wrote down during the meeting. Um, one of my favorite topics is crack sealing lately, and we still have a piece of money that we're looking at. And every year that we don't seal cracks is, is, is going in the wrong direction. And is it too late this year to possibly do some of that, or intelligently do some crack sealing with some of that money we freed up from Hemlock Street?
I would, um, suggest that we, I still have that discussion on crack sealing for this year and going forward.
Right.
We need a proactive, you know, program for that. Um, this year, I would say, uh, with everything going on, and trying to get a crack seal, all projects out the door, probably not realistic for that. Um, we want to have that discussion, uh, Mike Gabriel workshop discussions, uh, about the different options that exist.
Right. Because it's just another year of water infiltration to the cracks, and yada, yada. Okay, so this year is pretty much, it's just can't happen. Um, I don't know if the commission's aware, but, um, there's been a lot of clearing done up at the viewing area at the top of Mount Zion. Parks and Rec committee members just manned up and got out and went and did it. It's really cool. And they have actually had a proposed viewing platform designed free by Paul Buchko, I do believe his name is. And, um, so there's this, of course, um, and actually, I do believe the building trades class at the college would construct it, is it? Michael, is that what was said?
We, we've had a discussion with, um, all that possibility.
Right.
They haven't confirmed definitely yet, but they have, they are receptive to the, to the proposal.
Right.
Part of that was, they wanted us to have stamp drawings by an architect or engineer. Um, Paul Buchko was a structural engineer, retired, uh, helps out the community, volunteered to do that for us, and, um, so, and again, so we've got that piece of puzzle. Like you said, they, uh, volunteer group of citizens now, and cleared a lot of the brush that was in the area. Um, so now it's a matter of looking at funding possibilities to construct that.
And, um, a lot to like about the project. I mean, it's really a sweet spot in Ironwood. And, uh, there is some money that has been freed up through the Aurora thing and through Hemlock Street, so I would like to look at the possibility of at least being partially, partially helping to pay for this project. Maybe we can do crowdfunding, different things were discussed at Park and Rec. But a good project, and for really a low amount of money, so wanted to let the commission know about that. And, uh, one of the residents brought up Trail Two not being officially maybe a trail right now. That's a pretty big deal. And, um, there is a railroad working group, kind of a group, that I think we should get back to that and address that.
Yeah, with, with the, um, snowmobile group there, uh, we do have a new, um, person in charge, uh, Richard Tucker, he has status, um, again, hearing indirectly before, I think they were looking at some different options, and, um, I thought, yeah, I thought there were options identified, but we didn't have.
Right.
We heard you have a discussion today, so we're wondering if we're all, see where we can hold on.
I'd be interested in helping out on that. Yep. So, that's all I have.
I knew the gentleman, Wakefield, was upset, uh, after last year, and I knew he had threatened to close the trail, but I did not know he actually did not grant them easement permission this year.
Yeah.
That's huge, not to have a trail connect to the east.
Right.
And that would hurt, uh, the businesses up here greatly. So if we have any contacts in the DNR, we might want to reach out to them and ask them what's going on.
Yeah, I think they're looking at options, I believe that's the case, um, but I want to speak, kind of, to talk to them more and see where they're at with that process, but we'll find out when we report back to you.
And, uh, Michael, this gentleman had a question for you after the meeting, right here, so if you want to touch base. So, thanks.
Any other other matters? Okay, um, item W, adjournment.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Semel, second by Commissioner Kair to adjourn tonight's meeting.